Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another episode of Real Talk with Cherry G. Today, we have the, well, I have the pleasure and the honor of interviewing Minister Devin Pandy Senior. He is running for city councilman in Ward Four of Gainesville, Georgia. How's evening, sir?
Things are well. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity to discuss my campaign.
Yes, I, um, one, I'm excited to see that we have diversity out there and more and more people pushing for diversity in our communities. I'm really excited about that. And I, I really want the people to know who you are, not just as a person running for office, but to get to know who Mr. Devin Pandy is. So we're going to start this off by asking you, where were you born and or raised?
Okay, well, um, people normally ask me, where are you from? And my typical response to that is everywhere and nowhere at the same time. So I was born in Belize. When I was two years old, we moved to New York. And when I was seven, my father joined the military. So I was a military brat my entire childhood. And then I joined the military straight out of high school. So, um, so I really am from everywhere and nowhere, um, which is one of the reasons why, uh, why I decided to, uh, to, um, take up roots here in Gainesville, um, to make sure that I can give my children, um, a, a place of home and a place of belonging that, uh, that I didn't have. My, my childhood was great, but there are some things that, uh, that I miss. When I hear other people talk about growing up in one place. And so.
I can relate. I can relate.
Yeah. So what I'm, what, what my wife and I are trying to do is to ensure that our five month old has a place to always call home, but we also want to make sure that, uh, that her experiences around the world are diversified as well.
That's awesome. So I, I, as I said earlier, I can relate to that. I'm, I'm a military baby, military brat. I was born in Okinawa and spent most of my childhood in, uh, the early parts of my childhood in Europe. And then my father landed us in Florida. And so that's where our roots started to take place. But yeah, I can totally understand that. Now, I know a lot of people, um, they look at people in politics as you know, um, can I trust this person? Can I not trust this person? Tell me something that, what got you into politics? What was the thing, the spark that says, hey, I need to be in politics?
Well, I would say that my desire to enter politics, it really stems from, from a deep rooted commitment to serving my country, um, and serving my community. That's what I learned from my parents. Like I said earlier, my father, uh, joined the military, um, when I was seven and my mother was always in the community. Um, and I was, I was a mama's boy. So I was always with her, um, shopping and whatnot, but also, um, uh, serving in the soup kitchens, um, making sandwiches. And I was so young, they wouldn't allow me to make the sandwiches, but I was allowed to take them once they got them in the little plastic baggies and put them into the paper bags. And I really enjoyed that. And so I've, I've always been passionate about making a positive impact and contributing to the betterment of society. Um, and I believe politics is just one of the most effective avenues, um, for enacting, uh, meaningful change and addressing issues that really matter to people.
You know, I like that you said that you were introduced to the life of servitude at a very young age because you were at the soup kitchens. Um, it's not something that really you had to be taught to do because it was something, uh, it's almost like a family legacy to give back to your community to make positive change. And I, I really appreciate that because, um, nowadays is very difficult for, I mean, we don't see it like we did when we were younger, right? People aren't so community driven. And I like the fact that you're a family man and that you're focused on your community. Can you tell me a little bit about some things that you've done in the community now that people should know about Mr. Pandy?
Oh, sure. Um, well, up until, uh, about a month ago, I was the Minister of Community Outreach, um, at my church, the Community Church of Atlanta. We recently lost our pastor, um, Apostle Roger Huey. And, um, uh, but, uh, I was the, uh, the Minister of Community Outreach there. Um, I'm also the chaplain of the Local American Legion. I am a board member of, uh, the Habitat for Humanity, board member of, uh, the Humane Society. Um, I am co-founder and vice president of the North Georgia Black Business Alliance. Um, we serve 13 counties in the north, uh, northeastern region of Georgia, um, the Georgia mountains region. And, um, I'm also a co-founder and vice president of the Gentlemen of Gainesville Hall County. That's a youth mentorship nonprofit organization. Um, and that, that particular, um, uh, organization stemmed from a 1960s, um, organization called the Jets or the Jets Club. And, uh, so they focus on, on, um, on mentoring youth. Uh, so I'm very proud of that. Also volunteer, um, on Tuesdays with the Sunshine Seniors. Uh, they feed, um, anywhere from 150 to 300 families every Tuesday, um, on Thanksgiving. I haven't been able to join them yet on Thanksgiving, but from what I hear, um, in the past, they fed, um, 1,300 families. Another time they fed 1,700 families. So they're a very, uh, very active organization taking care of their neighbors. And then I also sit, um, as a member of the Eugene Brown Veterans Memorial Steering Committee. And, um, so what that is, what we're trying to, trying to do our research to figure it out, but we do believe that that is the first veterans memorial in Georgia that, uh, you probably hear my, uh, probably hear my five month old crying right now.
That's, that's what happens when you're, you're a family man, right?
Absolutely. I love it too. There, there's nothing. The only thing I love more than her cries, her laugh.
Yeah.
So that we believe that it is the only, the Eugene Brown Veterans Memorial is the only veterans memorial in Georgia, um, commemorating and celebrating, um, uh, African-American soldiers or service people who served during segregation.
That's, that's amazing. Cause you know, um, a lot of our history is lost, right? And, um, having been in Georgia and, um, again, like I said, I appreciate you doing this interview with me because it's always exciting to see the changes that are happening in, in Georgia, in the state of Georgia and seeing how the community is coming together regardless of your race, your ethnicity, your culture. And that's important because when a community builds and stands together, it grows together. And I see in your campaign, that's, uh, that you push building together and growing together. We all bleed red, right? So I, I appreciate your, your campaign in the fact too, that you're really embracing family. You want to make sure family and the community are as our whole, right? And so.
Let me tell you, the, the diversity, it really goes both ways because, um, we, we all have, and I wouldn't say the tendency, but we all have, uh, not everyone, but all genres of people have the ability to either accept or push away certain people. And so today, my, uh, my campaign volunteer and I were laughing about this because we realized, you know, she, she's walking around with me handing out, uh, uh, flyers and, uh, she's in her seventies. And she's also a white woman. And we stopped to think about it. She is the only white, she's the only white person that is not only a member of the North Georgia Black Business Alliance, but she's a board member. She is a serious, um, uh, ally. And, and I think that's what we need. It's, it's great to fight for, for things that benefit us and people that look like us or worship like us, um, or, or anything like that, that, that makes us the same. But when you can step outside of that and help other people that you may not have so much in common with, that I believe is what makes people good people.
Exactly. And that's, that's what the whole campaign is about, right? So I want to take it back one step, but before we do that, I want to make sure that everyone that's just now tuning in, we are talking to Minister Devin Pandy Senior. He is running for city, city councilman for Ward Four in Gainesville, Georgia. We're talking about his, uh, career up until now, his passion about, uh, the community of Gainesville. And we're going to be telling you a little bit later in the segment where you can do early voting, um, and where you can go to do that. But before we get into all of that, I want to step back a little bit. And doing research, I read, uh, to where there was someone in politics that was very special to you. And I want to talk about him just briefly a little bit, uh, Councilman Wangaman. Now, correct me if I said his name wrong, but I wanted to make sure I said it right. What was he, what was he to you? What was Mr. Wangaman to you?
George was a friend. Um, I, I've, I've known him for a number of years, but he really became my friend, um, last year in, uh, June, he invited me to his home. Something that he hadn't done before. And, uh, and I was a little skeptical. I don't know why, just he randomly invited me to his home.
Why were you skeptical?
Just because we didn't have, up until that, that point, we didn't have that type of relationship.
Okay.
Another, um, he had, he had actually spoken at, um, at, so in 2021, because of COVID, the group, the, 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 um, Gainesville Hall County Black History Society decided that they were not going to hold a Juneteenth. And so I, with their permission, um, I and Angela Middleton, um, the founder of the North Georgia Black Business Alliance, we in three weeks threw together a great Juneteenth celebration. Of course, it wasn't as grand as what the Black History Society normally does. We did it in three weeks, but it still turned out to be wonderful. And George stopped by and, um, and I invited him to, to speak. And I mean, he did. And, uh, but that was, uh, that was, um, February, um, June, uh, 19, uh, oh my gosh, that was June 2021. So, uh, so in June of last year, he invited me to his home and, uh, his family was still cooking. And so we went out onto the back, uh, the back porch to talk. And we were out there for quite some time. And he was explaining to me that he wasn't planning on running at the end of his term in 2025, that he had gotten sick. And that he wanted to, uh, to go ahead and, uh, step away. And then he asked me if I had considered running again, because I had run for offices in the past. And I told him, um, you know, I was thinking about it, but you know, I'm trying to take a break. I've run so many times over the last few years. My wife is, uh, is expecting a child. So I'm not, I'm not really sure. Well, he went on to ask me if I would run, um, if I would consider running to, to succeed him. And that just took me by surprise. Um, and he explained to me that he, he, he noticed the things that I was doing in the community. Um, and he, um, he saw value in, in me. And that, that really, it really humbled me. Um, and so I, I asked him for a couple of weeks. I wanted to, uh, speak to my wife about it. I wanted to pray about it. And then I, I in turn invited him and his wife to my home for dinner. And, uh, and that's when I let them know that I had decided to run.
So you know, um, it's always the behind the scenes that the people don't see, right? That are the special moments, right? So here we have a man that from my understanding, uh, of what I read about Mr. Wangaman, he was a promoter of change, right? He was someone that embraced equality. He was someone that looked beyond what was on the surface. Here, this man was sitting annoying you for years, but quietly watching you and seeing the moves that you were making speaks volumes, right? So I have to ask you this because I understand that you said you ran different offices and I can see we're getting a little discouraged, right? But being a man of God and stuff like that, I have this thing that I always say, what God has for you, right? No man can take from you. What do you think? Because I know you prayed about this thing. What do you think or what do you feel God's purpose is for you in this race?
Well, I will say this, um, I don't do anything with the intent to lose. However, um, throughout my life, I have, I have thrown myself into situations where it wasn't likely that I was going to win. And running in the area that I'm in, um, being a part of the, uh, political party that I do, it is very difficult for any candidate of my party to win in this area. And, and that's, that's understood. But what I got was that, like I said, I don't run to lose. I, I run to win. But sometimes there is more. I apologize. I could have sworn I silenced my stuff, but anyway, um, there is more than just winning. And so my life growing up, I was told, don't bother voting. It's not going to matter. Look at the color of your skin. They don't care what you think. And because of that, um, I grew up thinking that voting didn't matter. And I grew up not knowing that I thought that the people who were in these offices were already special people. And that they were groomed for those positions. I, I don't know what I thought, but I didn't think that it was anything that I or anyone that, that looked like me could do. Or there were very few that could. And so now that I am here in this place at this age with this, these experiences and this knowledge, um, and if I dare say this wisdom, I realize that I am in a position where I can be a role model, an example, a catalyst for other people who may not think that they can, or that they should vote, or that they can run. And I don't only mean black people. I don't only mean Hispanic people. When you look at me, yeah, that's, that's what you see, but I'm so much more than that. So my family came from nothing. So I'm talking about the poor, the middle class. I came from a different country. I'm talking about migrants. Uh, I came from, um, a family of, of ser-, of servicemen and women. And so I'm talking about service, serving your country, serving your, your community. Um, and so all of those things are important. And I want to show people who fit in some aspect of my mold, that you can do these things. And one of the mantras that I have used throughout my, uh, my campaigns in the past is I tell people that, look, I look like I look. I come from where I come from. And I'm running for office. If I can run, you can vote.
I like that. And you actually, um, took words out of my, my mouth that I was going to say about, it's not about the matter of winning or losing, but just by you being in the position that you're in and doing the things you are doing, you're going to win regardless. And what I mean by that, for those of you that are tuned in and listening is there's somebody watching and it's going to see this broadcast or see anything that you do. And you're going to inspire, encourage and educate them on the things that they can do. So I commend you for that. And it's got to be very hard, especially being a new father, um, and a family man. You have to keep those things in perspective. Granted, it's not like it was back in the sixties and the fifties and the sixties, but we're not that far from it, right? If we're going to be realistic about the times that we are in. I want to ask you this before we, uh, give the, uh, the specifics of where people need to go and vote and about the early voting. What are some of the plans or the initiatives that you want to have addressed in your community and the challenges and the changes you want to make?
Oh, that's, I love this question. Because there's so much that we can do, um, on both sides of, of the, um, of the spectrum, whether we are volunteers, organizing, or whether we are in government. And so I am motivated by a, a deep commitment to ensuring that Gainesville grows inclusively and sustainably. I, I believe in prioritizing, um, the maintenance and enhancement of our city's infrastructure to accommodate, um, the continuous growth that we're seeing. Um, and just for those who don't know, Gainesville, um, is populated by about 45,000 people. But on any given day, we have schools here, um, jobs, um, a, a large healthcare system. Um, and then not to mention our, uh, our visitors, our, our tourists. And so those numbers can go from 45,000 easily to 120,000, um, on any given day. And so ensuring that our interest, infrastructure is, um, is able to continually accommodate that is very important. And so being able to accommodate continuous growth like we have been seeing all while ensuring that all areas, um, of Gainesville, regardless of their current development status, receive equitable attention, um, and support. Economic prosperity is paramount. I advocate for a robust economy that, that benefits everyone. And I'm, I'm talking about job creation, um, support for small businesses, fostering entrepreneurship. Hence, um, my involvement with the North Georgia Black Business Alliance. Access to affordable housing is fundamental. Um, and I am dedicated to ensuring that every resident has a place to call home. Having a safe, stable, permanent roof over your head, now that fosters stability, security, everything else that comes along with it. Um, and those are things that every person and that every family deserves. Um, another thing is that, uh, I, I stress environmental sustainability. And this is a particular place where I definitely would like to follow in George's footsteps because he was big on environmental sustainability, um, and working with, he was one of, if not the most active volunteer with, uh, an organization here, um, uh, Keep Hall Clean. Uh, we, we are, we're in Hall County here and Keep Hall Clean, um, is a great organization that works to keep our air clean, keep our, our waters clean. And George was very involved in that and I plan to be as well. And so preserving Gainesville's natural beauty, we, we've got all of these beautiful parks. Butler Park just built, um, just, uh, just dedicated last year, um, to Lake Lanier. Our biggest, uh, our, our, our main, um, course attraction. Yeah. So keeping that clean and, and safe for people to boat, to fish, to swim is, is paramount. Also, I hope I'm not talking too much. I just, I have so many ideas of things that I want to, uh, to champion. Or at least to, to help with, to assist with if, if these things are already being championed. But, um, no, I'm passionate about education and ensuring that every child in Gainesville has access to high quality education that prepares them for success. I want to make sure that when my five month old daughter, um, is of school age, that she has the, um, the, the education, the mentorship, uh, the everything that comes along with it to make sure that she grows into a successful, um, young adult. Education is the, is the foundation of opportunity. And I'm committed to, to working collaboratively with schools, parents and the community to strengthen our education system and provide our children with the resources they need to thrive.
All right. So I'm going to play devil's advocate with you for a second. Let's say for instance, you, we, um, you don't, you don't get the seat in office. Do you continue spreading and, and serving in your community? Do you continue to build upon the things that you say you want to change? Do you continue to work at making that change?
Oh, absolutely. And you don't even have to take my word for it. Um, you've seen it already. Like I said, I've, I've run in it. I've run before and I haven't won. And I'm still out here doing the work because the work needs to be done. And there are, yes, well, yes, in so many ways.
So many ways. Um, and it may not be sitting in a seat, but you are changing lives as you touch them, right? Again, everybody, we're talking to Minister Devin Pandy Senior, who is running for city councilman in Ward, Ward Four of Gainesville, Georgia. They are in early voting right now up until May 17th. I know that he is going to give you some other places, but if you're, you can go to the Gainesville Civic Center, that is 830 Green Street Northeast, Gainesville, Georgia. If you're going to vote early and to any other polling place, I'm going to let him take it over a little bit more to give you some more details about how you can early vote or to encourage you. Those of you that think your vote doesn't matter, it does because your silence is golden. Because when you don't vote or you don't give your, say your piece or put your input in, the wrong people end up in places that we don't want them in. And what I mean by wrong people, I'm talking about people who don't hold your values or put your best interests at heart. So if you could tell them again where they can go, early voting, when voting is, and, um, just details about voting.
Right. And, and that's a very important point that you just brought up because, uh, uh, another, not really mantra, but another thing that I like to tell people is that, look, it's important that we have the people that we trust, have our, um, wellbeing at heart to vote them into office. And my job, when I get to office is to give people who are not there, to give the people that I represent, not only a seat at the table, that's great. It's great to have a seat at the table, but that seat at the table is nothing if you don't have a voice in the conversation. And that's what I am providing. Um, so, uh, so yes, people can, uh, so, uh, early voting has already started. It began April 29th. It runs through May 17th. And you can vote during early voting at any voting, uh, any polling place. Um, and then on May 21st, which is election day, uh, you must go to your assigned polling place. And you can find your polling place by Googling, uh, or by doing a web search for my voter page. And it will, and then click on the link to my voter page. You'll put in your information and it will bring up your precinct card and it'll tell you where your precinct is.
Okay. If you want people to learn a little bit more about you, your story and your journey, can you give them your social media areas? Where is the best place to learn about Mr. Pandy?
Yes, uh, you can visit devinpandy.com to get more information about me. And from there you can click on, um, all of my social media to go to my social media. Um, if you just want to go straight there, you can, uh, do a search for Pandy for Georgia or Devin Pandy, whichever one, uh, whichever one you want to use. And, and that will work too. But devinpandy.com can get a lot of information about me, what I stand for, what the campaign is trying to do in Gainesville. And one, one thing that I really want to, to let people know is that sometimes it's difficult. You have, um, you have candidates who are making, you know, making promises, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. And they'll tell you that, hey, I, I, it's important to me what the people think, the people that I represent think. And that's very important. They should say that, but they should also back it up. And how I plan to back that up is that I do want to hear from the people that I will be representing. And so I don't make promises often and my promises are, are never empty. And I promise that I will hold, uh, town hall meetings, um, as the councilman for Ward Four. Um, that is, that is my promise to the people, um, of the city.
Well, Mr. Pandy, I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to interview you and tell your story. I'm always excited to find people such as yourself that are out there that are advocating for change, no matter where you are in, um, what community you're in to serve, that you're for all people, not just a certain demographic or group of folks, but for all other people within the community. And the more that you continue to promote change, I promise you change will come. Um, if our predecessors stopped at every sign of trouble or every, um, missed hit or failure, I don't like to call them failures, but mishits, then we wouldn't be, and you wouldn't be, um, in the seats that we are in right now. We wouldn't have the. We wouldn't have the opportunities to do interviews or even to run for office. So again, I want to say congrats to you for taking that step and walking into your purpose and to your destiny. Um, and also encouraging and inspiring people that look like you, that they too have a voice and they should use it. So again, guys, you are listening to an episode of Real Talk with Cherry G. We have talked today with Minister Devin Pandy Senior, running for city councilman Ward Four of Gainesville, Georgia. Again, if you want to learn more about him, you will go to devinpandy.com or just type in Pandy for Georgia. Thanks again, guys, and we're signing out and we will see you soon.
Thank you so much. Take care, everyone.